So we have a couple of commissioners not joining us this evening. I want to give Mike another minute. As far as I know, I think he's still planning to attend, so let's just hang on for one second here.
In a situation where it's just informational and we perhaps didn't have a quorum, we would just continue on with the meeting? Or how, what would happen?
Okay. As long as we don't take any action, I think we can still hold a meeting. We can't take any action, though. We can't, well, we can't do anything like that. But this is just informational, so yeah, we can continue.
Looks like Mike might need to be promoted to a panelist.
He's coming. He's coming in right now.
I was, I was sitting waiting to be accepted as a panelist.
I'm actually doing this from, uh, from my iPad, which I haven't done before, so you probably have to remind me if I don't mute myself at the appropriate time. Okay, let's go ahead and get started. I call this February seventeenth, Sammamish Planning Commission Meeting to order. Um, let's start with roll call. And like I said, we have a few people that let us know that they won't be in attendance, so I'll still go through the list. So I'm Mark Baughman, and I'm here. Josh Amato.
Here.
Jerry Norman. I see Jerry there. Mike Rusko.
I'm here.
TC Labby, I believe TC said he would not be able to attend. Uh, Karen Malcolm, Karen, I think, said she would not be able to attend. And Carthick Satharaman, who I believe said she would not be able to attend. So it's the four of us. We can, uh, we can do whatever we want, right?
My, uh, my audio working now? I had it unplugged.
Yep. Okay, thank you. You're good. Amber, do you want to read the meeting accessibility statement?
Yes, thank you. One moment.
Who's our facilitator this evening who can read the meeting accessibility statement, or I can read it?
No, I can read it. I just needed to put it up on the screen. Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 2025, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the Virtual Planning Commission Meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is able to be submitted. To view or join the meeting via Zoom, please use the options below. By putting into your browser HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash Z O O M dot U S forward slash J forward slash nine one zero seven six eight nine seven eight six nine, or by calling via mobile or landline two five three two one five eight seven eight two, and entering code nine one zero seven six eight nine seven eight six nine. To view live, you may visit the City of Sammamish website, the City of Sammamish YouTube station, or Comcast Channel 21 within Sammamish only. You may also view the meeting at a later date by the same three options. And back to Chair Baughman.
Thank you, Amber. So next is approval of this evening's agenda. Anyone have any comments about this evening's agenda? So we'll call the agenda approved by common consent. Um, approval of the minutes from our February third meeting. Um, does anybody have any comments? And there was a note that there was a, a topic correction in one of the public comments uh, that was tracked in the meeting minutes, so that's been corrected. Anything else anybody has comments on? Nope. So the February third meeting minutes are approved by common consent. Next is public comment on non-agenda topics. Tonight, we're going to be talking about stormwater, so um, for non-agenda public comments, now's the time.
Okay, and let me just go ahead and read the, um, information on giving public comment. Each speaker is allowed up to three minutes for non-agenda comment, five minutes if representing an organization. To give a verbal comment, you may join the Zoom link and raise a virtual hand by pushing star nine if you are calling in. It looks like we do have, um, a few callers on the line, so I will promote the first caller. Ms. Wichter, you are unmuted.
Hi, this is Mary Wichter. I live at 408 208th Avenue Northeast in Sammamish, Washington. I wanted to speak for three minutes on then until now, specifically regard to a little bit of the history of Sammamish and also the drainage codes up until now. Um, so, uh, back in 1889, Washington was not a state yet. It was still a territory. And the picture behind me where it's red but going all the way to the lake, that area was done on a one-page paper plat. And it was called the his, uh, it's called now the Historic Plat of Inglewood. Back then, it was actually called the Town of Inglewood. And then after it was platted, um, it became, Washington became a state later in that same year, so July to November of 1889. Um, so it's a really old plat. The, um, the each lot is twenty-five yards wide, or excuse me, twenty-five feet wide and a hundred feet long. So altogether, it's twenty-five hundred square feet. And a lot of those have been aggregated over the years, but there's still quite a number of lots. And it also exists, like you can see behind me, the yellow spots are where there's steep slopes. And then the light blue is where there's a landslide hazard area mapped. And Inglewood actually is constrained by, I think, almost all the critical areas. Um, so I won't go through that now, but, um, I did want to say that, uh, the City of Sammamish started a long time ago in history. And before that, it was actually owned or lived in by the Snoqualmie tribe members, including George Davis, who is a Snoqualmie tribe ancestral, um, person, uh, McKenna Sweet Dormin had spoken in October of 2016 on that. Um, so it, it is a native people's land, and then it starts with a really old thing, um, that was platted as a town and has since grown since then. Um, the second thing I wanted to bring up is that, um, there really wasn't a lot of subdivision code until about nineteen thirty-four, nineteen thirty-five. And then, uh, Tamarack, where I live, is actually just south of Inglewood, directly south. Um, it was platted in nineteen sixty-four as an assessor's plat of Tamarack. So there wasn't a developer for, um, either of the places. And we're, and they're historic plats because they came before nineteen seventy-seven per City of Sammamish code definitions. Um, so both those things happened, and then nineteen sixty-four is three years after I was born, I'm almost sixty now. And, um, then what happened is, no, and Tamarack, by the way, is two hundred and twelve lots, so it wasn't a small plat when it was done as a survey. And then in nineteen sixty-nine, um, comprehensive subdivision regulations were passed for the first time. But King County real hadn't invented the word drainage yet. So, uh, that got invented in sixty-nine through seventy-one as recommendations and guidelines. And the first time that drainage was required was actually in
Ten seconds.
Seven, and then, uh, flow control wasn't required until nineteen, uh, seventy-nine in May. So I just wanted to cover that because that's kind of where it started from, and maybe I'll write up a little bit more because I don't have time to talk on it now. But thank you for listening to the history.
Thank you, Ms. Wichter. And I will allow our next caller to give comment. Mr. Stickney, you are unmuted.
Okay, there we go. Hello, Planning Commissioners. This is Paul Stickney, Sammamish. Would like to give you the same presentation I gave the City Council a couple of nights ago about some inspiring, um, quotes and net positive objectives. Here's a quote from me. Housing supplies in Sammamish have been misdeveloped over the last forty years. Alleviating housing misdevelopment will add holistic, sustainable enrichments above and beyond those we presently have and enjoy in our community. And these enrichments will be a far greater value for our residents and city than for development interests. This is a non-zero-sum game, a win-win-win situation to enable prosperity for posterity. At the February eighth meeting, take a look at that City Council meeting, and I discussed direction and degree for Sammamish, seven parts of the enrich and sustain solution, and its satisfying jackpots, seven, 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 seven. Tonight, I'm just going to recap a couple of the net positive key objectives in looking to alleviate imbalance to enable enrichments. Overarching, come to Sammamish for the natural beauty with adequate and classy housing options to stay for life. Improve over forty significant consequence topics that matter to our community. Ensure first-rate parks, recreation fields, open space, trails, connectivity, and walkability. Preserve our forested suburban character, beautiful greenery, and e-environmental stewardship. In our existing neighborhoods that are roughly ninety-seven percent of the city, retain the character of those established neighborhoods, which are primarily de-chats, single-family homes on suitably sized, appealing lots. Reduce adding more large, single-family homes, but ensure the compatibility for those that are built. And preserve safe, attractive neighborhoods, sensitive to quality, design, and intensity. For our mixed-use centers, which are about three percent of the city, have a vibrant, classy city heart for fun, housing variety, health, rapport, and conveniences. Now, meet past and present, different and diverse, and smaller housing shortage imbalances in-town center. And later, meet projected, different, diverse, and smaller housing shortage imbalances
Ten seconds.
centers. This is the way to attain a non-zero-sum game, win-win-win, and prosperity for posterity. I'll be reaching out to talk to all of you about this. Time to seize the direction for Sammamish. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Stickney. And just want to give our last attendee an opportunity to push star nine if you want to give comment. And that looks like that is all of our, um, public comments. So back to Chair Baughman.
Great, thank you. Um, next on our agenda is our main topic for this evening. A new business topic, which is going to be a presentation on the 2021 King County Surface Water Design Manual. And I believe Stephanie is going to be our presenter, or at least start.
Thank you, Chair Baughman. Uh, can everyone see and hear me okay? Great. Uh, good evening, commissioners and anyone listening. Uh, thanks for having us today. So I'm Stephanie Sullivan, a senior stormwater engineer, and I'm managing the stormwater code update for the city. This update will ensure that we comply with our municipal stormwater permit requirements. Today, I have Wayne Carlson and Stephanie Hindmarch with AHBL. They are our consultants, leading this effort, and will present to you today. They have extensive experience in stormwater code and have actually worked with the city in the past during our prior code update, which took place in 2016. Um, we had an interim update in around 2019 as well. Um, so they have lots of experience, and I'll let them take it away.
Great. Thank, yeah, thank you. Um, we're going to be, uh, giving kind of a high-level overview of the, uh, the stormwater code, uh, uh, project and, and up, and update, uh, here this evening, but we'll be back before you here, um, several additional times, uh, through, uh, both, uh, meetings as well as, uh, public open houses. Um, kind of lost the, the screen there.
Yeah, sorry about that. Are you able to see it now?
Yes. Oh, thank you.
Great.
So, uh, next slide, please. So I want to begin, uh, just by, uh, indicating and, and sharing with you what our agenda will be for this evening. So we'll begin by, uh, explaining, uh, why we're updating the stormwater code and manual. Uh, just introduce, uh, quickly to you the, the project team, the, the folks that are here, as well as some of them that aren't here, uh, this evening. Uh, then, uh, Stephanie, uh, Hindmarch, we got two Stepheneys on this project. Will, uh, introduce, uh, the, and review the project goals. She'll, uh, explain the, uh, the project approach, uh, discuss the project schedule, and then, um, summarize at least some of the initial gap analysis findings, or gap or opportunity analysis findings. And, uh, just as, as we kind of begin this discussion, we are still kind of, uh, in the middle of analyzing the codes against the, the permit. So, uh, we don't have a lot to, uh, share in terms of observations, uh, here this evening, but we wanted to set out, uh, the, the, the project and, and begin to explain to you, uh, you know, kind of the next steps and, and, and when you'll see us come back. Next slide. So I want to give you just a little bit of a, a, a primer, uh, so to speak, on, uh, why we're doing this. And so there's, there may be a few of you who are here, uh, either as planning commissioners or, or perhaps, uh, uh, just participants in the process. But we are, uh, updating the city's, uh, stormwater codes and its, uh, stormwater design manual um, under the auspices of the, uh, the Clean Water Act. So the Clean Water Act, uh, similar to the, uh, the Clean Air Act, is what is known as a technologic, technology-based piece of legislation. And what that means is that, uh, there, there's a legal standard for the, the Clean Water Act, and, and that is a treatment to the, what's known as the maximum extent practicable, okay? And I, I'm not crazy about that word practicable because it, it doesn't really roll off the tongue, uh, too well. But that is, uh, the legal standard, uh, in the, the, the Clean, the Clean, uh, Water Act. Sorry, I've got a dog barking. Hopefully not too distracting. But, um, with that, um, as, uh, Stephanie Sullivan indicated, we were, uh, working with the city six years ago to, uh, to update the city's, uh, stormwater codes, uh, update its, uh, manual as well as its, uh, addendum. And, uh, there were certain, uh, standards based on what was considered practicable back then. And now with this new permit, uh, stuff that may heretofore have not been, uh, uh, practicable, uh, six years ago, now is. And so we were here before you, uh, again, uh, six years ago, and, uh, the city will be back before you again in another five. And so these permits last five years. The reason it's been six is because, uh, ecology extended the previous permit by a little bit of extra time. So he, the, the last permit went from twenty-twelve to twenty-eighteen, um, even though it was originally twenty-twelve to, uh, to twenty-seventeen. And so this new permit is from, uh, twenty-nineteen to, to twenty-twenty-four. So the, uh, there is something called the, the, uh, the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, and that's just a kind of a fancy term in the Clean Water Act where a, a municipal, uh, stormwater permit that is issued by EPA, uh, and it, or it, it's, it's, uh, the, the Clean Water Act is administered by EPA, but, uh, here in, in this state, ecology has the, uh, the local authority to administer it. So generally, there is, uh, the equivalent of ecology, uh, in, you know, I think forty-six out of fifty states. The EPA only administers it in just a, a couple of states. So ecology has issued, uh, municipal stormwater permits for what are known as Phase One and Phase Two jurisdictions. And those are essentially based on the size of the number of connections to a municipal separate stormwater system. And so here in, uh, Washington State, the, uh, Phase One jurisdictions, which are considered to have, you know, more connections and maybe a slight bit more sophistication, would be, uh, Seattle and Tacoma, King, Pierce, Snohomish, and Clark County. And so those are your Phase One, uh, jurisdictions. Every place else, pretty much throughout the state, are Phase Two. So Sammamish, Bellevue, Issaquah, they're, they're all Phase Two, even though some of those, uh, cities are, are, are quite large. And so within that permit, um, and, and this is bullet point number two here, item, uh, S five C six dot B, um, and this is a, you know, this permit is, you know, a good hundred pages with, with a whole bunch of appendices, but requires the adoption of new codes, uh, to be effective, uh, June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, and that comply with, uh, it, that, that require updates to the, the stormwater regulations. And so the permit also, though, allows a Phase Two permittee, such as the City of Sammamish, to adopt the regulations of a, of a, of a Phase One permittee. So, uh, as many of you, uh, probably already know, the, uh, the City of Sammamish, uh, adopts as its stormwater regulation or its stormwater design criteria, the King County Surface Water Design Manual. And with that, though, there are local adaptations, uh, to that manual to make it, uh, uh, specific to the, the needs, uh, of the City of Sammamish, and that's done through the Sammamish addendum. So there's an addendum to the Surface Water Design Manual that the City of Sammamish has adopted. And so we are, uh, amending, uh, the, the various, uh, uh, controls, engineering, and, uh, municipal, uh, uh, code controls that, uh, that relate to stormwater as part of this project. Uh, next slide. And so the project, uh, team, uh, obviously, you all know Stephanie Sullivan. She's a senior engineer in the stormwater, uh, group, uh, with the city. Um, my name is Wayne Carlson. I was, uh, involved, as was Brittany Port, the second name on here, um, back in, uh, back in twenty-sixteen when we assisted the city with the update to its, uh, stormwater codes and standards last time. And then also Stephanie Hindmarch, who you'll be hearing from here in a few moments. And then, uh, oversight for the project is, uh, being performed by Audrey Starsee, the, uh, the Deputy Director for the Public Works Department.
Okay, so going into some of the goals of this project, um, like Wayne said, we're going to be looking at some minor updates to the stormwater code to make sure that the code is in alignment with the requirements of the permit. Um, we'll also be working to adopt the twenty-twenty-one King County Manual. Um, currently, the twenty-sixteen manual has been adopted by the city, and we'll be updating the code to adopt the twenty-twenty-one manual. And then we'll also be making adjustments to that addendum that Wayne touched on to make sure that we are, it's still in alignment with the twenty-twenty-one manual and some of the changes that might have occurred in their latest update. So our approach, uh, we've been working through some initial outreach as we've been working through this gap analysis. Uh, we'll be meeting with a group of staff on Tuesday to get some staff input on, um, some of the things, especially in the addendum, that are working and aren't working, and some changes that staff might like to see, beyond the scope of just the permit requirements, since this is a good opportunity to, um, go ahead and make, you know, any other changes in addition to those permit-required ones. Um, we'll be, um, developing some draft code and bringing that back to the Planning Commission in April. We'll also have an open house, um, where the public will have an opportunity to give some input on the process. Uh, we'll have a City Council study session. Uh, we'll also be working through the SEPA process and Commerce Review. And then we'll be bringing, uh, our final recommendations to City Council, um, for adoption. So some more detail on that schedule. Um, Stephanie Sullivan presented to the council in January to brief them on the project. Right now, we're at Planning Commission Meeting number one, and we've started the gap, um, and opportunity analysis. We'll be wrapping that up, uh, around the end of March. We'll be having a virtual open house in March to give the public a chance to provide comments. And then we'll be drafting, um, some code updates and changes to the addendum throughout April. And we'll also have another council meeting, um, two additional Planning Commission meetings, where we'll bring those, uh, draft updates to you. And then we'll be bringing the Planning Commission recommendation to council for adoption prior to June thirtieth of this year, um, as required by the permit. So our initial findings, um, we've started the gap analysis. We've been looking through the requirements of the permit, the changes to the twenty-twenty-one, um, manual as well, as well as receiving some comments from staff that we're going to go into some greater detail on, on Tuesday. Um, and we've been finding that the existing code is largely, um, compliant with the twenty-twenty-one permit requirements. So we're not expecting any major changes there. We will be updating it to adopt the twenty-twenty-one manual instead of the twenty-sixteen one with the Sammamish addendum that we'll be making some updates to. Um, but that is largely compliant with those requirements. The twenty-twenty-one updates, the King County Manual, uh, will also have pretty minimal impacts on the addendum. There are a couple of things we'll need to change to make sure that, um, both the addendum and the manual are consistent with one another. Um, but I think where we're going to be seeing some of the, the biggest changes or biggest potential is where staff are identifying possible changes to the code, but, um, especially the addendum, um, as we have further discussion with staff on, you know, what's been working in the last five years with the twenty-sixteen addendum, and what could, um, be modified for process improvements going forward. So our next steps, we'll be finalizing that gap analysis. We'll be proposing, um, those amendments and discussing those changes at a public open house next month. Uh, we'll be refining those with input from the Planning Commission and council, and then we'll be moving towards council adoption in June. So you can expect to see us back, uh, in April, and at that point, we'll be asking for planning input on the proposed changes that we'll, we'll be bringing back to you. So I think with that, we are ready for some questions.
All right, who has questions? Um, I, if you would just go ahead and ask, I'm trying to change my view so I can see everybody, but go ahead if you have a question and ask.
All right, uh, Wayne or Stephanie, either one. I've got, uh, just two questions. Uh, in reading through the material that was, uh, provided, there was EC four, which is one of the goals. Uh, it says promote and protect plants and species, because, uh, and, and use nat, native species of plants. And I, I wondered if you would maybe articulate it, if you're going to provide information in the report, or who decides how to promote and inform the public on what are native species if they build or develop? And the second question is, in a couple of places, it said, um, my question is, what is fifty percent or better phosphorus removal? How, how is phosphorus, uh, phosphorus removal accomplished? But it's, it's new to me, so I don't understand the process.
Okay, let me, let me, uh, oops. Let me begin with the first question, uh, re, and, and I'll let Stephanie Sullivan kind of deal with the second one a little bit. So with respect to, uh, the, the, the promoting the, the use of, uh, native species, when, uh, applicants come in, uh, you know, for a, a, a pre-application meeting, uh, and are designing a project, they'll come in with a, with a concept for design, and a lot of times, what, what, what the code currently says and, and what remains the standard in the permit is that applicants are to use, uh, low-impact development practices, uh, uh, to the, to the, to the extent feasible. So there's this, this feasibility, and, and among those low-impact development practices, and the, and the manual stipulates, uh, from a technical perspective, what's feasible and what's, um, infeasible. But the number one practice for, uh, to achieve that, that L I D design, which is, which is really required under the manual, is primarily through the, uh, you know, either use of dispersion into native vegetation or, uh, through the, uh, through the use of, uh, by retention, um, facilities. And those are sometimes called rain gardens. And rain gardens have, uh, planting pallets where the city then can encourage, uh, and, and and the, the planting pallets, uh, are, are provided, uh, to the applicants. We, we, we have, uh, lists of, uh, suitable plantings. And within those lists, it, it'll specify whether the, the, the selected material is, is a native, uh, planting or, or not. And so, uh, the, the goal is to use, uh, more native, uh, plantings, things that, uh, um, are acclimated to the, to the, the, the climate and, um, and can, uh, in, in are well-adjusted to, to the region. And so that's one of the, 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 the key reasons, uh, for that, for that language there. Stephanie, do you want to talk about phosphorus and, and the lakes?
Sure. Um, so the fifth, so fifty percent, um, phosphorus removal is part of the water quality treatment requirements. Um, depending on what type of drainage review your project requires, which depends on the size, where you're located.
If there are lakes nearby, it requires a certain level of protection. So sensitive lake water quality treatment requires 50% phosphorus removal. Whereas we have a couple of critical drainage areas identified as Pine Lake and Beaver Lake. So areas that drain to those lakes have an 80% phosphorus removal using Acart, which is all known and reasonable technology. And the ways so the Surface Water Design Manual currently, the 2016 manual we have, has a menu of options that you use to treat for removing phosphorus. Some of those types of facilities might be a wet pond, a sand filter, you know, filters the water taking out that phosphorus. And the intent behind it is when you have too much phosphorus going into these water bodies, it increases bacterial growth or algae and can cause water quality problems. Does that help answer your question?
It does. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Of course.
Okay, who else? Josh or Mike?
I have one question, and it's as part of the review. Are we also looking at portions of the regulations that can be removed because they're no longer effective? I mean, that's a huge manual. So I'm curious, is as we're looking at it, are we looking for things that we can just strike completely as being, I guess that's the end of the question.
Yeah, there's not much that is, admittedly, there's not much that is stricken. The the manual provides design guidance for just a whole wide range of different project types, different uses, different pollutants that that might run off of a site. What the, so what the addendum does that and 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 so the the reason we don't strike too much really at all is that King County or the the when we talk about the maximum extent practicable and Acart, which is the the state's stormwater statute. The the ecology stormwater manual is is considered to meet that maximum extent practicable. Now, King County, the city of Tacoma, and in a one or two other places throughout the state have come up with manuals that are that have been deemed by ecology to be equivalent. And so and that's a very onerous and very difficult undertaking. And so a city like, you know, Samamish, you'd be spending hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to to write your own manual. And so we are relying on King County's declaration or by ecology that their manual is equivalent. So so that we don't have to reinvent the wheel. So what the with the Samamish addendum though does is creates, you know, kind of recognizes, you know, critical drainage, critical drainage ways. It does also very simple things such as stipulates that you know, Stephanie and folks at the city of Samamish are the ones vested to review the 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 plans as opposed to someone from King County. So we'll substitute the word Samamish for King County or substitute the the name of a, you know, King County Department for the Public Works Department at Samamish. So there's that kind of thing. But then what we did six years ago, there was a real strong emphasis by the council and planning commission. They said, we want stormwater facilities not to be the the equivalent, and the term that was used back then was a stormwater prison, you know, a large big hole in the ground with a fence. And and that was really ugly. So we have criteria in the addendum which goes above and beyond what what King County requires for softer slopes, side slopes, and requirements for, say, pedestrian pathways around and maybe some seating, something that makes it feel more like a like a pond and and an amenity. So those are the kind of things that that you find in in the addendum, but we won't be striking portions, but we will be customizing it for for our use with the city.
As a as a follow on to that question, at what point in the process are stakeholders brought in and how are they identified? So are we writing the addenda or our adjustments first and then bringing people in? Are we asking them questions first? Kind of trying to address some of that and then going back and and figuring out if we hit the mark or missed it. How is that, what's the process?
Did you want to go with that one, Stephanie? I could, then I could kind of follow on as well.
Sure. So if Stephanie Hindmarsh wants to bring up the the sketch or the graphic showing the schedule, our plan is, once we have all of the input from internal staff, we're going to take those ideas to the public open house in March. And the idea is we'll leave that in like a topic format. You know, most people don't like to read line by line code. So instead of getting lost in the weeds, we want to bring those topics up to the top and discuss those changes or additions in that format. And then we would wrap that into the red lines that we would draft and bring into the first meeting in April.
So, yeah, we will be having you, of course, review this line by line and underline and strike out. But but for for the the general public and various stakeholders, it'd be more topic based and and just kind of a word about the permit. The the differences between the permit now and the one six years ago now are 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 pretty nominal. The the permit, the 2016 permit, or excuse me, the 2012 permit that we were addressing in 2016 was the first time that low-impact development was required for phase tumor permittees to be the the preferred and commonly used approach for stormwater management. So because of that, we had a whole raft of codes and standards that had to be amended. We anticipate, although we're still reviewing everything and 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 don't have any, you know, conclusions yet, but as as both Stephaneys have indicated, we anticipate the the amendments to the the codes and standards to be probably much more surgical and and technical in nature and not as as wide wide ranging as they were six years ago. That being said, if there are are things related to stormwater management that that we hear from the the community as part of the the virtual open house, we we by all means will be attempting to address those in the appropriate area, either in the addendum or in some other part of the city's municipal code.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, I've got one or two quick questions here. So I'm glad you have the schedule up, a question that I had. It looks like, if I read this correctly, that the Planning Commission, the first meeting we have sometime in April, will be reviewing the draft code updates. Will we also be seeing the results of the gap and opportunity analysis so we could, you know, kind of tie that together? Comments from the public and then what's been changed in the code?
I can take that. So one idea I was thinking, because we have the virtual open house in March and then the commission meeting in April, with that kind of time, I was wondering if it might be an opportunity for us to provide a memo to update the commission with kind of the results from that open house, if that would be appropriate.
Well, I think that would be helpful. It would be very helpful, I know, for me in terms of understanding changes and the extent that public comment has been brought in to see something like that, whether it's included in the meeting or as a memo ahead of time, which we, and I think most of us are pretty good about studying things like that that come through. So I would I would be a proponent of that approach.
At a minimum, we would include the results from the open house and how we're addressing them in the agenda packet for that commission meeting. But I was thinking a memo ahead of that might be helpful as background, if if that's something that's been done in the past, I'm not sure.
Yeah, in the past, with this, what we did six years ago, we we provided the the gap analysis with a with a cover memo. This will be a is a fairly long matrix where we kind of look at everything and, you know, no change necessary or, you know, change the should do a shall or or, you know, some of it is is fairly you know, kind of minute changes. And like you say, some is a little bit more wide ranging, but yeah.
Yeah, well, I'm sure there would be some things that are more significant, either to keep in or remove or add. And I'm sure even within like the the next commission meeting, that we review this to allow for the public to see that as well and and provide comments. So some sort of summary would be helpful too. And so Stephanie, whatever you're thinking about for, you know, a report that we could read would be great. And then I'm sure that there needs to be something, you know, that the public could see at our next commission meeting. So these are my comments.
Okay, so I had a couple of questions. First, I would say, or Stephanie's question about a some communication outside of the meetings, I think it's a great idea. We should just have a little, it's not a super common thing that we do. So we should just make sure we think about how to make sure that commissioners are all aware that that communication has gone out and affirm that they've seen it. So that we have an even understanding of what's been sent for review amongst all the commissioners, especially because of the doing this on the screen, you know, virtually makes that a little bit more of a challenge. So my two questions are, number one, and having the schedule on the screen is perfect. I'm struggling a little bit. I'm wondering, maybe there might be others out there listening, but I wonder the same thing. It seems that there's sort of the two ends of the spectrum for modifications to the code and and the addendum here. One is purely making changes that bring us into compliance with what King County has, which should be minimal based on what I think I saw in the presentation. The other end of the spectrum is making significant modifications based on input from a variety of stakeholders, which is kind of what you're describing, and then Samamish could be pretty extensive. And when I think about that end of the spectrum, this schedule looks challenging because of how much conversation there may be from the city of Samamish. I'd like to hear your comments about that so that we can help the commission and myself think about how deep into the weeds we're going to get with some of this and how much opportunity there's going to be for input, because it could be quite extensive. And let me just ask my second question, which is shorter right now, and we can just talk about both of them. The other one I'm curious about is how is this handled or dealt with in our sort of Lakes of Mamish community of Issaquah, Redmond and Bellevue? What do they do? Are we synchronized with them or not? Or how does that work in those communities?
I think I can speak a little bit to the first question. Over the past five or six years, using the updates in the addendum from 2017, staff has, you know, found opportunities for improvement in process or policy and some items we're identifying, you know, may need that discussion of, does it belong with commissioner decision or is it something that could be done more administratively? So we may bring those conversations up to you and have you decide whether that's something you would want to take on or not, or if you would prefer it be delegated. I don't want to get too much into the details yet. But there's some application of certain requirements that I think could use some clarity that would be helpful in this update.
Stephanie, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Maybe I can clarify a little bit and just be more specific. If we have members of the community who have extensive comment and input, it feels to me like this process may struggle to accommodate that.
I see. So this meeting was meant to be that first touch for the public to come and be, you know, give their opinion and get into the process and understand it. And then we're really going to push the virtual open house to try and draw out that input. And then each meeting after this, so the first meeting in April, we'll be having those red lines with those changes and probably one of those, another opportunity for the public to add or modify or share their opinions on it. And at that point, we would be looking for guidance from you on what to take forward, what not to take forward. Wayne, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I was just going to add a little bit. And and one of the things that we tried to kind of consciously do last time with the the virtual open house, they weren't virtual last time, but but with the open houses and what would I would I anticipate we would do for this March one was specific kind of email invites or or just to folks that have been interested parties in the past. So you know, we we know who the folks are that that provide, you know, are, you know, kind of members of the environmental community. We know the the folks that are designers that regularly, you know, engineers that regularly use the 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 stormwater standards or regulations in the city. And so those are the folks that we reached out to last time. It was, you know, through email saying, hey, we're having these open houses, which which we had. Back then, we had them kind of piggybacked on farmers markets. So they were like Wednesday night type things, but we we specifically invited folks. And, you know, I I anticipate that that we would try to use a similar way to 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 draw those folks into this. Again, you know, based on the the changes to the 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 permit, you know, I anticipate they may call and and, you know, ask kind of, you know, what are the, you know, if they if they've been designing projects, they they may know what they think could work better, you know, process wise. But that's that's one of the ways that in in the past, I know that the city has tried to specifically draw upon some of those stakeholders to to make sure that there's participation.
And then my other question was just sort of the, what does it look like in in our Lakes of Mamish group of Issaquah, Redmond and Bellevue? Are we coordinated with them? Does it matter? Is it similar?
Well, the the process is similar in as much as we all have the same deadline. Some communities have adopted the ecology manual, others the the King County manual. And so the degree to which, you know, the 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 addendums that that you know, any one of those communities have are all kind of slightly different. I suppose that Samamish kind of historically has been a little more advanced with respect to trying to make sure that its stormwater facilities are more aesthetic in nature than maybe some of those other communities. But but, you know, I I guess all of the communities, Bellevue, Redmond, Issaquah, Samamish, the the land values are 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 so high that a lot of the facilities are also underground, you know, in vaults and and things like that. So there's a lot of similarity there, you know, as well. But some of the communities that you mentioned, I think, use ecology and and some use King County.
Thanks. Anyone else have any further questions to ask?
Wayne, did did you do the comprehensive stormwater plan? Was that your firm?
No, we didn't do the, no, we didn't do the comprehensive stormwater plan. I'm trying to remember who did that. Do you know, Stephanie?
It doesn't matter. I'm not investigating the firm. I'd like the format as they described. What's the change in code that's required? How does that affect Samamish? They had a pretty easy to read document. So we could see, to Mark's point, what's required and, you know, what's what he got to have, what's nice to have kind of thing. And then the same for stakeholders, you know, what what might they have to say? And is it realistic and practicable? So it's a good format, I thought.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure who did that. I was looking it up, but I can't find it.
But there's a copy of it on the tonight's agenda. If you if you roll back up and you can scroll and open up the document and it's, you know, you can look at it yourself.
All right, anybody else? All right, anybody else have questions or comments? I will say that I think for all of our projects, we should have a, a staff leader and a person from a consultant with the same name, just to keep all of us commissioners off of those.
Oh, it's difficult, I tell you, you know, I, we need, I was thinking, we need to come up with nicknames.
No, we just need to pay attention and we'll do that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
All right, thanks, thanks to Stephanie and Stephanie and Wayne, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thanks, Wayne.
All right, next on our agenda is agenda-related topic, the stormwater code-related public comment. And I'm guessing we'll have a couple of folks that want to make public comment about our agenda topics for this evening.
Okay, whoops, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, so we do have some folks on the line for public comment. And just a reminder that each speaker is allowed seven minutes. And when there is a 10 seconds remaining, I will give you a notification that you have 10 minutes left. And our first caller is Mary Victor. Mary, I will promote you and you are able to give comment. Thank you.
Hi, this is Mary Victor at 408 208th Avenue Northeast in Sammish, Washington. First of all, I wanted to thank for the great presentation and the consultant's review of a lot of details. I didn't realize they were the same people in 2016, but they saw an awful lot of me in 2016. We made a lot of good changes then, so that was good to see. And I've worked with Stephanie with the PH in the past as a development review engineer and then also with stormwater, so I'm glad to see faces. Just a couple of things, if you've ever read the code before, you will notice that it's changed because the development regulations phase one was implemented for clearing and grading and trying to do some better things. And then development regulations phase two actually renumbered with, with unified development code update. So like if you knew Title 13 before, Title 13 has been repealed and you will find it under Title 21. And as part of that, I specifically have requests for Stephanie with the PH from the city. The adopted basin plans were under the interim comp plan in Title 24. They're still listed there and they talk about the East Lake Sammish Basin Plan and then one of that basin plans I've never read from Issaquah. Those are kind of straggling in the old code and were never brought over. So as part of this update, one of the things that King County Surface Water Design Manual does is those 115 pages or 135 or whatever it is now, they do say, hey, for, these are core requirements that you need to do and these are your special requirements. And if you have certain basin plans, then you need to look into those basin plans. So it is important that people know where those are. So if they're not on the developer page or not integrated, people are not going to see them. And it is important to go back and read them. And by the way, basins plans cost 200, 300, 400, $500,000 to do. So even if they're old, a lot of times they really have good information. So I brought that up in the past, hopefully that will get on the to-do list, because I think that code should be brought in. The second thing is, the, the Surface Water Design Manual can be sort of thought of as you adopt the King County, because that's the one that's required and it's the one that meets ecology, so you really aren't going to change it a lot. And then in your own addendum, then you can add things. And it's not so much to strike out what King County did or ecology did, because you really can't do that. It's more like to customize it for Sammish. Like in Sammish, we have the only two lakes that are official lakes and not wetlands are Pine Lake and Beaver Lake. And a long time ago, Beaver Lake had all these requirements for getting the 80% phosphorus and things. Pine Lake didn't have them, so they said, hey, let's just use whatever Beaver Lake has until we have it. Also, Lake Sammish is a sensitive lake, so there's a number of things you need to do for that. We also have five salmon strains, which we've done a lot of work for culvert replacements for Cocony. Those are George Davis Creek, Zaccoose Creek, Ebrake Creek, Pine Lake Creek, and then also Laughing Jacobs Creek. So with those, you, you want to have certain things. So the critical drainage areas was kind of a hook in the King County code that had never been used by this city. So I had started that with that in April of 2016 and finally by December of that same year, we were able to get it implemented. Now we have some kind of customized thresholds and treatment areas for Sammish, because it's, it's related to our being a plateau and that we have really steep western slopes and we have environmentally areas that we want to protect. So a lot of those changes have been made and they're in the code. And like I said, they used to be Title 13 as the municipal code or SMC, Sammish Municipal Code, and they are now in the Sammish Development Code, the SDC. So when you go to look on the main website and you go into permits and regulations and then you see those, those are two different things, but you kind of have to put the code together. And the new SDC is in kind of a flipbook format that's supposed to make it a lot more easy to read, thanks to the development regulations phase two. So that's just a lot of words there, but there's a lot of things that have changed. If you've seen it before, it might be confusing. And if you haven't noticed that the development code is split into two parts, that's also important. So like critical drainage areas were, were, have special things and there's a special map for that under the GIS portion of the website. As far as the drafts and the timeframe, I don't really see a problem with it. I was, in everything written today, I was not aware that the city was kind of making suggestions or improvements to clarify things, which I think is awesome, that does need to get done. So in the writing, it says, we're not going to change thresholds when things are adopted before, but I'm hearing in the words tonight that there might be some process changes that would be done and some of them would be administrative and some of them might need to have a public and commissioner level review as it goes to city council. So I'm all good with that. I have pretty good trust in the process and people and I'm really excited because some of the existing planning commissioners are really great at asking questions and some of the new planning commissioners are also very interested in reading documents already. So I, I thank you for your involvement in doing that. Couple of things I can note that haven't worked very well in the past, and this is particularly for Stephanie Sullivan to listen to, is there are four categories of drainage review. There's simplified, targeted, large and full drainage review. And large and full are more for big projects, but simplified is supposed to be for the lower projects. But one thing that gets missed and a lot of things I see from this city is if you're in like a landslide or erosion hazard area, you're not supposed to have just a simplified review, you're also supposed to have a targeted drainage review. And that's been in the code from King County for a long time, but a lot of times, people that are applying or asking questions or when new staff reviews it, that's getting missed. And a targeted drainage review is really important, because when you're in an area where you can't put water into the soils and you've got steep slopes, you really have to do different and better things. So you need to have that targeted drainage review and there's three categories of those. The other thing is, is low impact development is a really good thing and the best way to go. That's why it's required everywhere that it can be used and they call that feasible. And it's not, it's infeasible and I'm just saying, so they're, they're technically based. And one of those is that if you can, like when rain falls, it hits the trees, the trees suck up the water and then it hits the ground. And that's kind of what LID impact or LID best management practices are supposed to do. And if you can't do that, you're supposed to mimic doing that with vegetation and other things, which we had some excellent questions about native plants and, and the resources for those tonight, so that's great. But you don't want to be using LID or low impact development, except for a minimum excavation of foundations. You don't want to use those in landslide or erosion hazardous areas, because you should not be putting water into the soils. In fact, septic, you purchase water from the water district and then you put water into the soils. And we are having problems in those areas with, for example, the map I showed at the very.
10 seconds.
So there's a lot of things to be worked on. I have faith in the process. Thank you for listening to me tonight. And I will probably write up things either after this meeting or before or attend the public meetings. So thank you for listening and all the work that you do.
Thank you, Ms. Victor. And we do have one more caller, Mr. Stickney. You are unmuted and able to give comment.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Just a few comments on stormwater tonight, not as long as I was contemplating. I sat through all this in 2015 and 16, met many of the staff. And when Mary and I were sitting in the back of all the council meetings that dealt with this process, were very involved in the stormwater comprehensive plan and in the King County manual changes and the Sammish addendum. I tend to like some simple summaries that I think are helpful. And I like to, if I'm not right, I focus on what's right, not who's right. So I'm not offended if I have something wrong and staff and/or consultants can correct me. But the single biggest change, as I recall, in updating to the 2016, at the, in early 2017, when we actually adopted the changes as a city, was the underlying premise of the King County manual, the ecology manual, was to mimic stormwater controls that, I'm, I'm trying to get my names right, Mary would help me with this, I think I'm going to get this right, to actually only allow water to leave a site after development that would have left the site if it was never developed and forested. So the standards were to whatever the water, the stormwater that would have left a pre-developed forested site is what can leave under the new standards. And those are much stricter, better for the environment, more appropriate for especially our community to have that standard. There have been others that have been advocating potentially to do with retention instead of detention, that in essence, some people would say that there should never be any water that leaves a site. Well, Mary and I have talked about this at length. I'm not a stormwater engineer, but that is not the best for the environment, is my understanding by people that are in the know. So here's the bottom line. It is my assumption that the changes being made to the 2021 King County Manual and Sammish Addendum will not be more stringent than the current standard, which is to when there's new development on a site, the stormwater that can leave is what would have left had it been pre-developed and forested, I mean, I'm sorry, without development and forested condition. I noticed, and I don't have the right word for it, so I'm, I'm not going to use a word. But in the, in the PDF that I sent today, one of the PDFs I sent was PDF B. And this was some work that was presented to the city council on December 28th. And it talks about minor changes to the, to the King County Surface Water Manual, but it also talks about a new Sammish addendum. And in that PDF, on page seven of, of that PDF, it talks about minor updates to the Sammish Stormwater Code, but then it says, develop new City of Sammish addendum. I don't know if that means minor or major changes. I think it would be good to provide a list on that. And also I think it would be good for this open house coming up, is to have a part of that open house packet be the gap and opportunity analysis that shows all the things identified and where the changes would be, both in the Sammish addendum and in the stormwater code in the 2021 surface manual. But what was interesting, jumping back to the meeting on, oh, I'm sorry, I got a wrong date, let me correct it. The agenda bill I was referring to in PDF B was at the January 18th city council meeting. It was submitted on December 28th. So if you're looking for it, it's on the January 18th CC meeting. On the staff presentation, which was not in that council packet, there were two pages. These pages are not in what I sent you, but if you go to the civic web and you download the staff presentation, these link the status of what's called E8 and E9. Now, I believe, am not certain, but I believe these are standards being asked for by city council from last year's retreat to focus on stricter standards than we currently have, more in the lines of more retention than the standard of, you know, detention. And I don't know, and I'm not sure, are these tied together on the same timeline? Some things makes it look like they are, some things make it looks like they're not. If they're not tied to the timeline and they're a separate entity, would be handled on their own, that I'm in favor of. But if they're going to be worked into this timeline, I think that needs to be really transparent, because it's a significant change. And gets me to my last point. Back in 2015, 16, I talked to the consultants at length, I'm not going to put words in their mouth, I, I'm going to paraphrase what I recall. At that time, there was only one place in Sammish that had standards like what we adopted in 17, and that was in town center since 2009. The council had foresight and basically put.
10 seconds.
Those applications on. We shouldn't get any more strict than that, because new development isn't the issue. The issue is going back and doing stormwater retrofits on past development. Have a good evening and thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Stickney. And that was our last caller. Back to Chair Baughman.
All right, thanks to Mary and all, both for their comments. That's about it for this evening. I do want to point out to anyone listening to make sure and take a look at the calendar for future planning commission meetings, because this particular topic comes up several times over the next couple of months. And if you're interested, it's important to track the calendar and make sure to keep track of that. Okay, Evan, is there anything else from staff for this evening?
Nothing from us, Mark.
Great, that being the case, I think we can adjourn. Can somebody move to adjourn, please?
I'm moved.
Second. I'm moved and seconded that we adjourned this meeting. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those know, great. Have a great evening, everyone. Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.
Evening.